Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming. We'll be getting started in about five minutes. All right, folks, I'm from the Midwest, and so we're going to start on time. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our Board of Education Candidate Forum hosted by the Middletown Federation of Teachers and the Middletown High School National Honor Society. Thank you all for being here tonight and for staying civically engaged. I also want to extend my gratitude to everyone who helped make this event possible, and of course, to the candidates who took the time to join us this evening. Before we begin, I'll introduce tonight's moderators and briefly go over the format and rules. My name is John Tucker, and I'm the L-PAC Vice President of the Middletown Federation of Teachers, a Middletown resident, and a biology teacher at Middletown High School.
Hello, I'm Amir Moose, a senior at Middletown High School, a member of National Honor Society, and the senior class president.
Hello, my name is Sophia Benador. I'm also a senior at Middletown High School, and I'm the president of Middletown High School's National Honor Society.
Good evening, my name is Amber Sheidira, and I am also a senior at Middletown High School. I am a leader of the Circle Keepers and also a member of National Honor Society.
Here's how tonight's forum will work. We'll begin by inviting each candidate to give a one-minute introduction. Each candidate will have, starting with Kelly B. and moving to the right. After introductions, we'll move into the question portion. Each candidate will have one minute to answer each question. We'll rotate the order so that each new question begins with the candidate to the right of the person who started the previous one. So, since introductions begin with Kelly B., the first question will start with Chris Cardella.
We will start with questions prepared by teachers and NHS students, but we also want to include questions from you, the audience. If you would like to submit a question, please write it on one of the note cards you received when you arrived and hand it to one of our volunteers in the aisles. We have a team of students and teachers reviewing questions throughout the night to make sure they reflect a wide range of audience perspectives. If you need extra note cards or a pen, just raise your hand, and one of our volunteers will bring them to you.
Thank you, Amber. With that, we're ready to begin introductions. Candidates, you'll see our timekeeper in the front row. They'll hold up a sign when you have 30 seconds remaining and another when your time is up. Kelly B., we'll start with you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for taking this time out this evening to be here this evening, to learn more about all of the candidates on both tickets, and I'm just thrilled to be part of this evening's program. I grew up in Chester and went to Mercy for high school, so I spent four years here doing the Peace and Justice Group, Odd Fellows Playhouse, volunteering at St. Vincent de Paul Soup Kitchen. I was fortunate enough to pay my way through college, so I managed to live in Boston, New York, and in San Francisco. I studied history with a minor in urban sociology, and I'm currently enrolled in a certificate program at the Kennedy School of Government and Nonprofit Management. I just wanted to say that I'm currently working as a public relations consultant with a not-for-profit who specializes in advocacy and support of undocumented students throughout Connecticut, and I'm thrilled to be here as I am a staunch supporter of public education. Thank you.
And to the candidates, really eat that mic. You can get up in there.
Did you not hear me?
I could hear you. Thank you.
All right, good evening, everybody. My name is Chris Cardella, and I am one of the Republican candidates for this year's election. I was born and raised here in Middletown, and I am a very proud graduate of Middletown High School class of 2005. I'm a forensic social worker with the state of Connecticut, and I live here with my wife, who's also a social worker, and my two children, ages five and eight. I am very proud of my educational experience here in Middletown Public Schools, and now that my children are in our public schools, I feel like it's time for me to get involved and to give back to the school system that gave me so much as a youth. Everyone in this room, we can all agree that we want exceptional schools, and over the years, our school system has unfortunately gotten away from that. From central office controversies to confusing curriculum changes, teacher burnout remains unacceptably high, and we continue to hemorrhage seasoned and dedicated staff on what seems like to be a monthly basis. This has to stop, and I believe I can bring a skill set to the Board of Education to help turn this tide. I just want to emphasize this: I am under no impression that I have all the answers, nor does any one person. As a board member, I would look to all the stakeholders in our school system, but most importantly, the teachers, to help guide decisions. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Alex Cohen. I've been a resident of Middletown for about five years. I actually moved here choosing to raise my kids here. My kids are just turned eight and 12. One's at Beeman here, one's at Lawrence Elementary. I care deeply about the experience they have, but I also care deeply about the experience that all of the children in our city have, making sure that they all have access to good opportunities across our city, our eight elementary schools, and our middle school and our high school. Public education has a target on its back right now. There's funding cuts coming from the federal government. I have experience working in board situations and making hard decisions about what to do with our budget and how to direct it to the right programs to make sure that everybody has a fair shot. I'm really proud to be part of the Democratic ticket, and I really appreciate you all being here tonight to engage in this process. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Liz Crooks, and I'm running unaffiliated, speaking not as a board member tonight, but as a candidate. And I feel my two years on the board and my 35 years as an educator helped me see what we need in Middletown. I care deeply about our students and our community, and I have the encouragement of many of my fellow board members and parents. My message and votes have been "students first." It is not okay that only 35% of our students get a four-year college degree within six years. It is not okay that only 15.4% of our 11th grade students are proficient or above in math. It is not okay that over the past five years, Middletown has lost more than 20 math teachers and several science teachers. There are many great educators in Middletown schools. However, there is also a need for change that must occur if we want to keep families coming to Middletown and staying in Middletown.
Hi, my name is Adam Hain, and like Liz, I'm not speaking for the board. I'm seeking reelection. I joined two years ago in the board, and I've worked in education for over a decade. I have degrees in psychology, history, and secondary ed. I've also worked in the private sector as a business owner. I've experienced many walks of life. I understand struggling learners. I understand hardship, and I also understand what it means to be privileged. I desire out of a new term for increased access for parents to have information of what's going on in the schools, resulting in more accountability from school staff and students. Since joining the board, transparency has been number one. I have pushed to get more parent access to meetings. There's no reason we can't let parents, students who are their primary educators, to call into meetings, including them in the Middletown Public Schools is the answer.
Good evening, my name is... Sorry. My name is Dean Crouppa. I'm a Middletown resident, third generation. My children spent time in the Middletown Public Schools as well. In fact, right in the building that used to be here. I'd first like to thank the Middletown Federation of Teachers Local 1381 and the Middletown National Honor Society for having this forum. It's a great opportunity. I've never sought political office of any kind. I was in the Navy for 11 years. I flew aircraft there, then at United Airlines, where I just retired about three years ago after 30 years. I found myself looking for something to do with retirement, which became coaching football. I quickly found out it was much more than just a game. We've instituted at Middletown High School over the course of 12 years academic tracking program, a character building program, because we want to give these kids the best chance that they can get when they're out in this world. I see a lot of energy in the Board of Ed. I've sat in on meetings for over a year now, and I look forward to this evening. Thanks.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Kim Riordan. It looks like Riordan, but it's the Irish spelling. I think somewhere they dropped the O at one point. And I'm running for the first time for a position on the Middletown Board of Education, and I'm very, very excited about it. I would first like to take the time to say thank you to all those responsible for organizing this great event, the teachers' union, and the National Honor Society, and especially to Roberta for her patience with me regarding responding to her emails. I'm running for the board as I feel that my background as a math educator, my exceptional people skills, as well as my longstanding personal connection to this wonderful community, will be an asset to the board and to the school community. My journey into education began when I was a student at Middlesex Community College over 30 years ago. One of my professors recommended me for a position as a peer tutor. After that was the experience that sparked my love for helping others learn math. After earning my math degree the spring of 2003, I began my formal teaching career as a middle school math teacher here in Middletown at St. John's School, and I am currently teaching at Middletown Middlesex Community College. Thank you. My time is up. I had more to say, but that's okay.
So our first question comes from the teachers, and it's a short question, but it's a big question. Were you to win the election, what would your budget priorities be? And we're going to start with you, Chris, and move to Alex.
Well, first and foremost, I would say that any type of priority that I put together or that I look to is going to be the result of ongoing conversations I have with the teachers, the students, the staff, all of the stakeholders within the building. There's not necessarily one specific priority that I want. I will say I want to make sure that the teachers are given the supplies, the equipment, the resources they need to be able to teach. We don't want it to be a situation where there's limited amounts of books, or there's no paper, or things along those lines. We want the supplies. We want the resources. If we can prioritize that, to me, that's where I'm starting first. And then again, everything else flows from there, from the conversations that I would have with the teachers' union, stakeholders, et cetera.
Same question. Well, as a parent of kids in the system, I've seen firsthand what wonderful opportunities they've had, be it with the robotics program, athletics programs, arts programs, and these are all things that you can be faced with tough decisions at budget time, and sometimes there can be a thought to look to these programs, to shrink them, and I would advocate strongly that we need arts programs. We need things like robotics. We need athletic opportunities for our students. So it's really down to that. I can't really sit up here and claim that I have, as a candidate, extensive knowledge of what our budgetary constraints are at the moment, but I do know about the federal funding cuts and how targeted they are towards special education resources. And another thing that I need to mention, too, is the free breakfast and lunch program is incredibly important, and I know that we have it for this year, but we need to look to make sure that that can continue going forward.
My theory, when looking at the budget, besides getting input from others, is students first. And one example of that was in June when we were faced with a 2.1 million budget mitigation cut, and administration came in with still extras for administrative salaries, and they were cutting two programs for students. And I quickly said, "I cannot vote for any budget that's cutting the programs for students," and find another way.
I would like to echo Liz's statements. When we did the mitigation, I think they went too much after staff, and that's what makes the schools go around. And without them, I know we already have a parish shortage. We already have a teacher shortage. We need to fill those first. Priority is that. And I've also spent time the two years on the curriculum committee, which I've joined and would love to spend more time on that, and hopefully if Republicans took control, maybe be the chair or whatever, and investigate more and ask the teachers what's working in these programs and how can we improve them, or if something's not working, let's get rid of it.
A lot of great answers. I echo, as you said, a lot of that. I think primarily it's going to be a matter of what the taxpayers are interested in. By taxpayers specifically, I mean parents of students who are currently in the system. I think the faculty needs to be compensated. I think that's a big part of it as well. Our parish situation is rather dire right now. I think we can do a lot better in that as far as compensation for them. Student activities. I know there's a lot of after-school programs that kids are concerned. We heard from the gift program last week. They're concerned about their livelihood, if they're going to be able to continue. It's a great program. So those types. And then lastly, the facilities themselves. We want a good look to our school system. We want to become a symbol to Connecticut what a high school, in my case, I spent most of my time in Middletown High School, is supposed to be like. There's no reason why we can't be the marquee for the state.
Thank you. Those are all wonderful answers. It's tough going last. Of course, being an educator myself, I would prioritize making sure that the teachers, the frontline workers, the paras, they have what they need. They have the supplies. And also, it's very important to make sure they have the support staff to help them do what they need to do, which the most important thing is educate the youth in our community. I also am a big proponent of academic supports, and that includes doing things like teaching students soft skills. Don't forget, I'm getting a lot of the students from Middletown High in my math classes, and so I have a unique perspective as to what they need. So definitely using prioritizing money with academic supports. Is that good? Okay.
So, first thing I would do is review current budget and past budget to see where we're coming from, where we're going to, and look to see how best to harness the changes and progress we've made. My focus is specifically for students and teachers. I'm a proponent of fair and equitable pay for all of the teachers and paras, and we need to be able to provide the best possible curriculum and programs to support and engage our students. I think the best way to do this would be focusing on language and multicultural learning, as well as specifically math and science and the arts, which are key in developing the whole child. I think one of the things that gets lost is spending additional funds on a lot of administrative costs when we could be maybe diverting those to student-led programs that make an impact on the actual student at their time in our schools. Thank you.
Our next question comes from the students. How would you incorporate student voice and leadership during your tenure as Board of Ed member? And we'll start with Alex.
This is a great question. An old friend used to say to me, "Authorship leads to ownership." We need to bring all voices to the table when it comes to developing our school climate and developing curriculum, developing everything about what it means to be at school. And one of the key stakeholders is students, and they are often left out of those kinds of conversations. For me, as I come to the table with this, I'm taking my lead from my kids and how I watch them go through their journey in school, and I take their perspective very seriously when I think about what I would want their schooling to look like. So I don't know exactly what it looks like to have a student perspective. I know at the Board of Education, we do have someone from Middletown High, and I think that's a great step, but I think that there are probably other layers of our school environment where we could involve students more.
I think including student voice, first of all, you have to step back and give them a forum where you can stand, I can sit and listen and hear from them. So whether that's student council, student government, in advisory, asking specific questions, but I think that using every avenue we have to elicit the student voice and listen to hear what they have to say before we move forward is very, very important. And so I just think using the avenues that we do have to get that voice heard.
I'm reminded of the words of my student teaching advisor when I was back in college. It was an interesting metaphor. "They are thoroughbreds. Let them run," as in, students want to learn. They want direction. But I've spent most of my career working with elementary education and even focused on kindergartners. They are so excited about learning. Yeah, when they get older, they're less excited, but we just have to figure out what excites them.
It is so difficult to find good leaders. I mean, just look around at our political landscape right now. I think that our students, that's the beginning. You're planting the seeds that someday will hopefully sprout and fix a lot of these problems. I don't know if we'll see it in our time, but I remain hopeful. And I can only offer that as a coach. Leadership is, anyone who's been in any sports understands the importance of good leadership. And we implemented a program called Coaching to Change Lives, and we would spend 15 minutes of every practice in small groups of seven kids with one coach. So we had about 60 kids. And in that, we would spend the entire week discussing leadership, not only the definition, but how it's applied during their day, during their day at home with their families, during the practice with football, and also in the hallways in school. I noticed on the Board of Ed, there's a lot of energy put toward adult subjects. It would be nice to see that focus more on the kids, the students' subjects.
Nice. Thank you. Well, I think it's very important for the students to have a voice when it comes to the issues and the things that are going on within our schools, because who can not tell us what is going on better than the students themselves? What's going on in the school? What's the climate like? What's going on in the classrooms? And it's so important for them to have a voice, and a lot of times, we tend to not listen. Sometimes we don't even listen to our own children, but they know better than us when it comes to a lot of issues, and they're very pure and honest in what they have to say, which is what I love. And I do believe it's very important that we give our students a chance to become leaders and have a chance to be developed and to be mentored so that they're going to be running this country one day, and we've kind of given them a bit of a mess to fix up, so we need them to step up.
In order to include students with their voices and engage them, I think one of the things we need to specifically look at is the non-traditional student. We have a lot of Honor Society. We have a lot of student council, but that does not make up the entire student body. There are English as a Second Language earners, kids who are struggling academically, and their voices are just as important as those who are elected to student council or any other position within your schools. Ideally, if there is a time allotment, would be to gather in small focus groups and be able to discern what is most impactful and what would be most beneficial in order to give credence to their experience.
Well, I echo all the thoughts that were shared up here. But in this day and age, there's no reason why we can't be having bi-monthly meetings with the executives of the student body. There's no reason why Board of Education members can't make themselves available to the student body to have conversations about what's going on in the schools. Between in-person meetings, whether it's in-person in a forum such as this, after school, at the high school, or via Teams or Zoom, we can have these conversations, and they should be ongoing. My current role as a social worker for the state of Connecticut, I help support forensic programs throughout the state, and one of the ways I do that is by meeting with them on a weekly basis, and this gives me a unique perspective on the dynamic of the program, how well it's going, the efficiencies, client situations, things along those lines. I'm able then to take that information back to my administration and to be able to tell them, "These are the trends that we're seeing. These are the concerns we're seeing," and that's how I'm able to make that macro-level improvement. So I think we could take that kind of same model, do it with the student body.
Thank you so much. Now, moving on back to what the teachers' priorities are and what their questions, in regards of how they rank their questions. They asked, "What role does your political affiliation play in your role as a BOE member?" We could start off with Liz.
I'm going to say absolutely none. I vote for what I feel is right for students, and politics just does not come into that. And some examples, I feel that the board that I'm on now, we agree to disagree at times. I think we get along very well. There's times that I have agreed with Democrats on the board. There's times that I have agreed with Republicans.
with Republicans on the board. I don't think of any of my decisions as being political decisions. You know, I just, I vote for what I believe is best for students and what is going to support our teachers. You know, having been a teacher for 35 years and an administrator, I feel that I'm very much in tune to knowing how much support our teachers need and appreciate.
I'm sad that you got that question first. It's the same, it doesn't. I mean, yeah, I have my core beliefs, sure, but I'm here for the students. I'm here to make it accessible to students and to parents to go for change. When I first was appointed to the board, I was not elected, I was appointed. When I first was appointed, the statement I was told, I hope he leaves politics at the door. Well, that's what I do, it's something I take pretty seriously. And like Liz said, I voted with Democrats, I voted against some members of my own party, and, you know, that's sometimes I do with Republicans. I'm here for the students, I want them to learn. I don't care about politics on the board.
I'd have to echo the previous two candidates, none. However, I'm a realist, and people bring their ideologies, they bring their interests into any forum. So, to, it can't be ignored. Instead, I'd prefer that we work together as a team regardless of party affiliation and use those energies and the caucuses to implement a lot of the policies and programs that we're trying to create for the kids ultimately. I think everyone is agreeance on that. But, you know, politics is a slippery slope. People get emotional, and that's fine, but there's a difference between politics and government. Government officials have assigned tasks and they have its sworn duty to perform. Politicians, we all know how that can become. So, it would have to be kept in check, but it can be used for good.
All right. So, I'd just like to say that my political affiliation will have absolutely nothing to do with the decisions I make if I'm elected onto the Board of Ed. I vote with my heart, I think with my head. As a mathematician, I have exceptional critical thinking skills, I have exceptional problem-solving skills because I've been trained. And I love working with others and hearing different ideas and different thoughts and opinions. And I think that on the Board of Education, that I don't even think about politics, I'll just think that we're all working together for the good, which is for the children and the students in our community, our future, and also for the teachers and the paras and all the staff and sometimes the administration, I guess. Thank you.
Your political affiliation and your core beliefs shape your perspective. However, that being said, within the Board of Education, as with in any sort of role that you play, whether it be work, home, hobby, there has to be teamwork and, in this case, bipartisanship. So, in terms of how would my political affiliation affect my policymaking or voting or caucusing, it wouldn't. I am here to serve what's best interests for the students and for the teachers and at the community at large.
I agree. Politics stops at the door for me. We are all part of our community here, we are all each other's neighbors, we're here to work together for what's best for the school system, for what's best for the students, in the best interest of the teachers, the taxpayers, everyone. We're here to problem solve. It shouldn't be a place for political stunt, it shouldn't be a place for political grandstanding, and I'm not going to put up with it.
Sure, once we are all sworn in, we're now part of a body that has to, you know, carry out our duties. And we're not going to be beholden to our parties. Once that's the case, we're going to be the individuals that you see up here. But I won't deny that I am a Democrat. I believe in strong unions, I believe in well-funded schools, I believe in protections for vulnerable communities, and I'm not going to shy away from that. Thank you.
We will commence with a question from our audience. As a BOE member, how will you support special education and social-emotional being in our school given our current political climate? We will start with Adam.
The last part was a social-emotional climate?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I got my, well, outside of substituting, being a substitute teacher, I started as a special ed tutor with my degree, they must have liked my degree in psychology. The program I worked in was a, they struggled with behavioral issues. I mean, we had a safe room, I know that was a topic of the past and no more. So, it's all about patience, and we need to give, make sure the students have, I'm sorry, make sure the special ed teachers have the resources and have the adequate amount of paras they need in order to fulfill whatever the students may need. We need to give access to them, and there's no reason they should be left behind.
I think one advantage of a public school system is that it does have far more resources for people with special needs. My aunt and godmother, my mother's sister grew up on a farm, which is now Smith Park over a country club road. She worked in Rocky Hill School System for over 40 years in special education. She was a very strong influence on my life and career, actually. If it weren't for her, I would not have gone into aviation. But, the budget is there, that's part of it also, a big part. Luckily, luckily, we do have those resources available. As far as the hallways and social, I'm a big proponent of, and I hate to use the D-word, but discipline in that we need to be nice to each other. I don't know what happened, suddenly we're not being nice to each other. I think the phones was a big thing. I'd like to see that's now somewhat under control, there's been a lot of advances over the last year and a half. During that time, I had the privilege to sit down with our superintendent, the chairman of the Board of Ed as well, and talk about these things every month.
Okay. I know how important support is for special education for the students and for the teachers and for all those and the parents, of course. Most important, right, is the parents and the students. It's so important for them to have the resources they need. I know right now, as far as the Connecticut State Community College System goes, because of the PAC program, which is the free tuition-free program, that's, we're accepting more and more students with special needs. And one of the struggles we have right now is trying to learn how to meet those. So, I know professional development is key, support from the administrative for the teachers and the paras, because it can be very, it's very rewarding of a position, of course, to teach special needs kids, but also very, can be very draining. So, having support. As far as social-emotional climate goes, I think we need to get back to fostering kindness and the golden rule, do unto others as you would like done unto you is so important.
All students are valued, all students have the need to feel safe and secure, and all students should be heard. In this climate that we're in, we need to be sure that our most vulnerable, from kindergarten through grade 12, feel that their community within the public schools is inclusive, and we need to start going back to teaching empathy and compassion in order to be able to grow as individuals and be able to fulfill their mission post-high school.
I'll certainly echo the empathy and kindness that you're talking about, Kelly. We definitely need to get back to that, we definitely need to make sure that that's a priority, and that's a staple of our schools, starting at the elementary and the preschool levels and on up. In terms of looking at resources and support for special education programs, when that funding's cut, it's, I'm not going to lie, it's tough. We have to, we're going to have to make tough decisions, and we're going to have to look at different places for that funding, whether it's community partners, whether it's trying to get, trying to access mental health services for our student body in other places. We have a plethora of resources in this area and throughout the state that I believe that we can contract with and that we can utilize for support. And those are the areas at which I would look at. But whatever the resources that are needed for our special education programs for our students, we need to make sure that they are there, we need to make sure that the classrooms are well-equipped.
There's two parts to this question, and they both deserve their own response. You know, from a special education perspective, I already mentioned, it's, the funding is being cut from a federal level. But, we, you know, we need to find other ways to fund programs, but also a key component of that is paras. We have 38 para openings right now, so obviously, and paras are a statewide problem. So, maybe we need to look at compensation for the para position and maybe accept a lower overall number of paras in the interest of getting some in the door. So, that's going to be a key component there. From a social-emotional perspective, look, we're still, we're still, students in schools today are still feeling the ripple effects of COVID. It's still, you know, that amount of time out of the school environment is still, we're still feeling it today. We need to connect with community partners, resources, so that those resources are available. I'm interested to see how this choose-love thing plays out, and I'm hopeful, and I'll be interested to learn more as it continues. Thanks.
As far as the special education part of it, I kind of mimic what everyone else has said here, that we need to make sure that the teachers have the resources and they have the paras that can help them in the classroom. That's key, especially with, you know, the cuts that have been happening. Social-emotional, a good advisory, I know the middle school and the high school have advisory programs, a good advisory program focuses on social-emotional learning. There are a lot of good curricula out there for that. Also, the choose-love, I was involved with Love Wins, which was the Anna Grace Project out of Newtown also, and it did do a tremendous amount of good, similar program. And the other thing is just, you know, the attitude of the adults in the building. And I used to just tell my students that everyone had a gift to offer, and that's the way we approached each student.
Thank you. Our next question also comes from the audience. What is your position on charter schools, vouchers, and school choice here in Middletown? And we're going to start with you, Dean.
Thank you. I've been following along with this subject in the newspapers, I think we all have, and there's a great deal of concern, there's a lot of energy being placed into this. I understand. As a Board of Ed member, I really don't believe I can have any effect on that rather right now. So, my focus rather is to ensure that our kids, the faculty, our administration, parents have the resources available to them to handle our current situation. It's out of our control right now, it's in the courts, I don't see it productive at this point.
I think school choice is important. I believe that, you know, parents have the right to decide where they would like their children to be educated and what they'll be taught in the schools. For the most part, parents are the primary educators. I think that, again, I know that as a Board of Ed member, that I don't think I'll have much input as to what happens if we get a charter school or a magnet school in, you know, in Middletown. But I do know that my son went to Vinyl Tech, and he did very well. I think the technical schools are a great option for our students, especially those that are not real academics. So, sometimes it's a better fit, you know, if they're not going to be going to college now, my granddaughter's at Vinyl as well. So, she's having fun, learning, of course, but, yeah, I think that parents should be able to get, have a choice.
I believe that parents should have a choice in where their children go to school. My, in my home, we had, I have a 19-year-old son and a 15-year-old daughter, and we made the decision, you know, with all of the choices, that she would be going to Mercy. My son had gone to Middletown High for a period, and as other people on the panel had mentioned, you know, COVID puts a definite strain on a lot of the teens and their emotional and social being. That said, the Board of Education has very little, if anything, to do in terms of making decisions about charter and magnet schools and school choice. That's right now in the hands of the state legislators. What I think our goal should be is to be focusing on how best to utilize our taxpayer dollars to make each of our schools in town the best that they possibly can be.
I am a big proponent of public schools, I believe in them, I'm the result of one. I think I got a very, very good education out of it, and it's my goal, being on the Board of Ed, to make sure that our school systems could be some of the best. I, you know, I agree with some of my colleagues up here that, you know, parents should certainly have the ability to choose the schools, have a voice in that. I am against school vouchers, and most recently, there's been a lot of conversation about a charter school coming here to Middletown. And my, to be quite honest, my thoughts have gone back and forth on the topic. The more I read and the more questions I have, the more answers I get, the more questions I have. So, I really don't have a firm position on it. What I will say is what I said at the beginning, I want to have the best public school system that we can in Middletown, and that's going to be my goal, and nothing's going to keep me from that.
There's a lot of talk about a charter school in Middletown because there are people who, they feel that their kids are not being served by our public school system. And if it were my kid, I would be fighting tooth and nail to get whatever, to get whatever my kid needed, so I understand that. Our job on the Board of Education, we don't have a say in this, but what we do have the opportunity to do is to work to help our public schools serve those parents, listen to those parents, and understand where our public school system is falling short for them. Because that's our job on the Board of Education, we can't undermine our public schools, we need to bolster them and support them and make sure that they are meeting the needs of all of our communities.
I have to say that I agree with Alex because I think that we do need to listen and we need to bolster our public schools so parents really feel like their children are being supported here. With that said, theoretically, I am definitely not for vouchers or charter schools. And that's from my years in education and dealing with the charter schools. Most of the students did not do any better than the district they were coming from. And the other big issue for the public school district that they're coming from is after October 15th, if they don't feel that your student is being successful in the charter school, they can send them back to the sending school, and we don't get that tuition back. So, it takes away from all of our students. And so, for that reason alone, I'm definitely not for the charters.
Our position is irrelevant. We don't have a say about charter schools. I know the issue is capital prep, wanting to come here, but you know what? They deserve an upper-down vote in the legislature, they should be able to figure out where they're going to go next. Parents should have a choice, they should be able to choose how great of a public school system they should have, and that's why I want them to have more say. And that's why I want them to have more say in what goes on at, well, not this table, the Board of Ed table, and with how the school operates. We should meet the competition head-on. We should make it so that we don't even want to send our kids to charter school, I'm sorry, parents don't want to send their kids to charter schools, that we want this public school to be the best option.
Our next question also comes from the audience. With so many curricular needs in our community and limits on what can be staffed or funded, which programs would you personally champion or advocate? Some program concerns from the audience. STEM, special education, family resource centers, media literacy, civics, and technical education. And we're starting off with Kim.
It's okay. Well, as a math, as a math teacher, what am I supposed to say here? Kind of in a, of course, STEM is something that I feel is near and dear to my heart. I do also believe that we should be teaching more civics in our school to help our students become more civically involved and to realize the importance of it. It would be, I really thought this auditorium would be full tonight. I was kind of hoping so that, you know, but we need to work on that, right? Getting more people involved and that starts with our children. Obviously, special ed is, is very important. And yeah, I think that's, that's it.
In terms of, I mean, every need for every student clearly is, you know, should be a mandate. In picking all of these, if I had to narrow them down, one would be special ed, as we've seen so many rises in different disorders or different diagnoses, and we need to be able to accommodate the students that have different ways of learning, as well as I would be in favor of media literacy and include reading comprehension as a key in order to discern fact from fiction and be able to observe what's going on in the media with knowledge and with, you know, forethought.
I think for me, for, for me, from that list that you, you guys provided, STEM, trades, and civics are three that stand out for me that would be potential priorities. But really, it's, it's going to be part of a larger conversation. Everybody has a stake in each and every one of those programs and we need to find ways to, to accommodate and to fund and support all of them. It might look a little bit different for each program, but we, we have to get creative. There's nine of us on the board, there's plenty of smart people in this room, we can all have these conversations and figure out what the best solutions are.
It's tough right now. It's tough to imagine that, you know, it's tough to imagine any reality, but one where we have to make tough decisions. I have some experience, I live in McDonough area and I've heard nothing but wonderful things about the STEAM program there. So I, I maybe hedge a little bit more towards something like that, but the reality is, like Chris just said, we're going to have to figure out creative ways to make sure that all these programs stay funded. Another thing too is we need to make sure that there's access to those programs. I mean, when you look at after-school programs here at Beeman, not every kid has access to those now because there's no more late bus. That's not fair. And we need to, we need to do some work to be creative, to make sure that all these programs are not just available, but accessible too.
Special education is mandated. If student has a 504 plan or an IEP, that must be followed, so that's not a choice. You know, other than that, you know, I'm going to say all of them. STEAM, the, you know, career tech ed in the trades, manufacturing, advanced placement courses, civics courses, they all serve different students. So they're all important. So I think that there's a way that we have to look and work to provide that for all of our students. You know, the career pathways are important, the, you know, giving advanced courses so that you can take AP courses before you go to college. Those are important, you know, for different kids. So I, I really think that every one of those is important and obviously, special education is, but that's not even a choice. That's, that's mandated.
Just to quickly echo Liz's statement, specialized mandated, it's not going anywhere. You know, we'll do whatever we can to help support it, but it's going to be there. I want to focus on the STEAM, STEM or STEAM, and civics, because those are my kind of wheelhouse. My, my father had a manufacturing plant and that's something I understood. He brought in a CNC machine, took a mortgage on the house kind of thing. It was, it was an interesting time to be, to be hanging. But, so, and I understand that Liz and I fought to save the, basically the CNC program at the high school, and we helped save the McDonough school, like voucher, wanting that teacher to stay. On the civics, I have a master's in history. That's, that's what I've always done and I understand why it's so important to learn where we came from and how our republic is set up. And like what Alex said, we need to better market these programs, maybe grab kids from other districts. I mean, I, I love programs like our VoA, I mean, that, that's known in the region.
Well, you can tell who's been on the Board of Ed and who hasn't, huh? All of those are important and I can't single out anyone. So I'd, I'd rather speak to how to not over-specialize. And by that I mean, give our faculty the opportunity to teach these basic skills to, to our kids. And I'm talking about very basic, as get to class, get to class on time, turn learning into a passion, right? If that happens, the other programs will improve organically from this. Quick story, I helped to run a study hall after school before the practice would start and I'd had myself and about 60 kids. And during that time, we would use a Power Schools, a clunky program, and came up with a spreadsheet in Excel. We could identify kids who were really struggling, so we would target our time on that. Now during that time, teachers would be coming out of school, finishing their things. On one hand, they'd have their keys, another they'd have their phone headed right through the study hall. So I would circle around, try to get in touch with them, say, these are your kids, spend a little time here. So if we can give them that sort of esprit de corps, I think it will help all of those programs.
Thank you. Again, from the audience, how do you see your role as a BOE member as far as getting firsthand experience in seeing how our schools are operating? Do you foresee spending time in our district schools and, and talking directly to staff and students? Kelly, you could start us off.
I'm first again. One of the key components, excuse me, of being on the Board of Ed is to be in the trenches, so to speak. And that would be visiting the schools, talking to the teachers, the parents, the paras, the administrators, meeting the students, seeing how things operate. You can't jump into a position having all of the answers and thinking you know best when you don't know the ins and outs of the everyday that go on at each school. And each school's different, but I would definitely be looking to spend a considerable amount of time within the buildings with the teachers, administrators, and hopefully the students.
Myself as well. My, after I was, my nomination for this, this position was announced, I spent most of my summer reaching out and speaking with teachers, staff members, folks in the, the school system, elementary, middle, high school, trying to get an idea of what, what's going on, what's happening, what's hap, what's going on in our school system, because we need to know what's going on. Board members need to know what's happening, like Kelly said, on the ground, in the trenches. And that's part of, part of what I intend to do. I intend to get to know the principals, get to know the teachers. I want my face to be familiar, so when people see me, they know that's Chris from the Board of Ed. He's been to my school and he's been to my kid's school. He knows what's going on, so that when we're coming back and making decisions, or when the superintendent or the, the chief administrators for the school systems are coming back and saying, we're doing X, Y, and Z in the school system, we can say either yes, that's true, or no, it's not. And when we will, and we'll know that because we've been there and we've seen it and we're talking to the teachers. Thank you.
I've had a, I've had a weird career. I've done a lot of different things. I've worked in the grocery business, I've worked in nonprofit data consulting, and now I'm at the Middletown Housing Authority. And the common theme there is that I've had to take the time to learn everything about how all of those three different places operate. I would, I talked to a Board of Education member when I first got the nomination and she said, you, you get out what you put in. So my intent is to work hard in this position, to make sure that I'm understanding all of the decisions that we're making. One thing, one job that I didn't just list in there is teacher. I've not been a teacher, I've not been a school administrator, but I do bring a beginner's mindset and I, and I am relentlessly curious. Now, there's also a chain of command, right? The administration runs the schools. So I want to be involved, I want to be there, I want to be, as Chris says, a friendly face, but also I will be respectful of the structures that we have in place. That being said, I, I need to learn a whole lot and I'm going to rely on our school community to teach me so that I can make the best decisions for us. Thank you.
I agree ideally, when I came into this position, I was hoping to spend a lot more time in the schools than I actually have. And I mean, I have done some walkthroughs with some administrators, but, you know, just to give, just to give a sense of reality, last February, myself and another board member have been asking to go in and do some more walkthroughs, specifically with ninth grade classes, and no one has gotten back to us. So it's, it's not easy, it's not as easy as it appears to be able to get into the schools and actually know what's going on. So I mean, I look at a lot of state reports, you know, and add insight and collect data or for new programs being proposed, trying to get ahold of people that I know that are experts in the field.
Again, I wish I was on that side of Liz. But, so, we all have adopted schools. When you get, when you get on the board, you get just, you get an adopted school. I actually have two because I'm only on one committee, so I have picked Donna and Billfield. I, I spent, basically, I've gone in and say, hey, what can, what can the board help you do? I mean, the board sets policy and that's like, hey, do you need help doing anything? And actually, where I got, one of our latest policy, the cell phone policy, I heard from a teacher and then from several teachers, and that's why I realized that important. So you, yes, you need, 100% need to talk with the teachers, get ideas from them, what works, what doesn't work, hey, how can, how can the board help you? Basically, we, we don't do the day-to-day at schools, but I mean, as much as we want to go in schools, it's not a reality.
I think I could literally do a 10-day seminar on this subject. After over a decade volunteering, it is imperative that we get into the schools. I took a CAG, is it a C-A-G? Help me out, Connecticut Association, they have a webinar, and it was, so you want to be a Board of Ed member. And one of the questions that I posed was, if I wanted to go into the school to see how our policies are playing out, and I was told, well, you can't patrol the hallways. So I think, to my colleague's point, there is this preconceived notion that people are going to be marching into the hallways, looking for problems and pointing out teachers that are not doing their jobs correctly. That is absolutely the opposite of what I think everybody here would intend to do, and that would be to observe. Policies are made through the superintendent. Board of Ed has very little power overall. Not a lot of people realize that. We're all focused basically through the chair to the, to the superintendent of schools. So once policies are implemented, if we're not in the hallways observing and seeing classroom environments, how will we know?
Great answers. So I see my role, if I am elected to the Board of Education, would be to serve as a bridge, a bridge within the community, between the schools, the teachers, the parents, the students, as well as the administrative and the community at large. I would love to be involved with STEM. I would love to be involved with any, any type of math. I have the unique perspective of being at the community college. We used to have a Bridges program, which was wonderful, where actually, one of my colleagues would go in and train a couple of the Middletown High teachers to teach our curriculum for one of our courses. But after COVID, that kind of waned away. I'd love to that, to be involved with that and, and be, you know, also, there's a dual enrollment program with the college, so I could be a liaison with the college as well. And I noticed about the Board of Ed and Middletown Public Schools, but we love Middletown students. Thank you.
This next question has become such a significant topic in the student bodies for a few years now. Starting with you, Chris, what is your stance on the current cell phone policy and how would you change it, if at all?
I, I support the current policy. Do not think kids need to have cell phones in, in classrooms, in schools. I support the Wonder Pouches or Yonder, whatever they're called. They're just a major distraction. It takes away from the educational experience. It's just one more, one more point of conflict between, between children and teachers, one more area by which administrators have to become involved in the classroom. And we, we also know that in times of emergencies within schools, they can create more chaos than, unintentional chaos than what it's necessarily meant to be. So I support the banning of the, the cell phones all throughout, through all of the schools, not just the high school, but middle, elementary, all the way.
I expect most people up here are going to be wildly unpopular with the students tonight. No, I mean, like all the, all the research that's coming back about how school environments are improving as a result of this policy, because it's not just here, it's, it's in a lot of different places now. It's hard to argue with that. I am sensitive to what happens in the case of an emergency, you know, certainly from, for parents outside the school, like all of a sudden not having access to, to their kid. I'm sensitive to that and I don't know if there's a way around that or to, to look at that, but certainly, like, the benefits are undeniable. I'm sorry.
I also agree that cell phones do not belong in the classroom or in the hallways. I, I don't necessarily, I wasn't, you know, thrilled about the Yonder Pouches, because I think there's one thing to ask students to put away their phone and turn them off, and it's another thing to ask them to lock it into a pouch. So that part I was not fond of. But I definitely do think as an educator, not having them in the classroom is very, very important.
The board was unanimous with the cell phones. That's one of the things I came into the board wanting to do. I, I do understand, I feel, I feel for the kids. My 12-year-old stepdaughter does not have a cell phone. She has an iPad. She can iMessage with her friends, but it doesn't go to school. And one of the things I've noticed is people have, they struggle to have conversations these days, and I think that not having a cell phone helps that. And actually, we did get a good report from the superintendent, the last board meeting, saying that kids are talking to each other. At, at the lunch, at lunch tables, they're talking, they're having conversations. That's what schools should be, building relationships.
Well, it's a state policy, so the point is moot. I think there may be two states in the country that still allow it, Illinois, if I'm not mistaken, or Indiana. But, so, but my own personal view on it, I was right there at the beginning when the Yonder Pouches were proposed. That was one of the first points that I was bringing forward about distractions in the hallways, distractions in class. I'd sit in on a class. Distractions in class. I'd sit in on a class and watch the teacher just say, "Once you finish, you can go on your phones." Boy, those kids would rip through their assignments and they were off on the side on their phones instead of discussing about current events perhaps, or what we used to do in the old days, talk to each other and read the newspaper and discuss it. You know, if you understand the neurology of it, it's extremely powerful, extremely powerful. And it's actually addictive. We all suffer from it. I've got this silly thing right here now. It's off, but it follows me everywhere and I'm painfully aware. So what it's doing to our kids is, remains to be seen. This thing is an amazing tool if used correctly. We could get them to that point, but first, there has to be a time and a place.
Oh, boy, oh, boy, oh, boy. The cell phones, huge issue on campus. I am all for not having cell phones in the classroom, having them turned off, put away. Still, students find ways to use a phone and just so you know, they know how to break into those pouches as well. Two granddaughters in the system. But anyway, so I do believe that, you know, I always say to my students when they come into my classroom, "This is your time. This is your private time, your time to learn and connect with the other students." I call them classmates in the room. And to hopefully enjoy math. That's always my hope. And to learn from me and to teach me as well. So the phones are a huge distraction. Yeah, I wish we could leave them outside the classroom door. But we don't have an actual policy on campus for it at the moment.
I'm sure no one's going to be shocked when I say that I also believe that there should not be phones in the classroom. I believe that it should be turned off, put away, not necessarily in a pouch, but turned off and put away. Being able, as my colleagues had mentioned, being able to do that, you engage with one another differently. You speak to one another. You listen. You go back to the basics, eye contact. Doing the things that seem so natural to one generation that seem so foreign to this one. No offense. But I do understand the love of your phone and how attached you are, we all are. But for a couple of hours, it can be put away and then, you know, focus on your education, focus on your friends, focus on what's in front of you in the moment.
So so many of you brought up the para shortage in your introductory statement. Not only are we suffering from a para shortage, but the paras we are able to get are often underprepared for the intense environments that they are placed into. What specifically would you do to bolster our para educator support in the district?
Well, it all starts with a shortage, right? We're expecting a lower number of paras to cover more ground. It's really tough to, it's really difficult to get out of first gear with that, to make progress towards making it a less overwhelming situation. I mean, we have to look at what we're doing for compensation for paras. This is a systemic problem. It's not, I don't think it's something that can, I don't think it's something where we can put Band-Aids on the symptoms. I mean, we can try to reduce workload and triage where appropriate, but it's a systemic problem that requires a systemic solution. There's 38 openings right now. You know, do we need to look at accepting less but paying better so that we don't have 38? Maybe we only have, maybe we could only have 12 or 13 or something like that. I also just, I mean, being the person up here who's saying like, "I'm not a teacher. I haven't worked in the school system." I would want to do some research on, you know, where on earth do they not have para shortages and what are they doing to make that happen?
I think that's an important point that maybe we do have to get, you know, do with fewer so that we can, you know, have those, you know, some of those positions filled. And, you know, we did increase the pay in June with the new contract, but did we, was it enough? Obviously not. We're still not getting paras. You know, it's, I think that part of getting them up to par might be, you know, giving the special needs teacher and the para professional some time that they can plan together. You know, and, you know, talk to one another. And, you know, the same thing as with teachers. Does the para have a mentor that they can go to? So I think that, you know, professional development, mentorship, and giving them time one-on-one with their teachers might help.
So the, I know there's a shortage in the whole state. And I think that that's part of the issue. I mean, we did just approve a contract. Yeah, there are ways to open up a contract, but that's not easily, that's a lot easier said than done. Maybe we necessarily change up the incentives, whether it be maybe a stipend to move into Middletown or move into the state even because it's going to be hard to find in the state. The union presidency that I mentioned in my past was a para professional tutor union. And the number one thing I did was answer questions. A lot of them had questions on, "How do I do this? How do I do this? Can you help with HR?" That's a question for HR, but it, we have to, like Liz said, maybe a mentorship. They need help. And we can offer the services to make their job easier, to make them, well, I'm sorry, not make them, but encourage them to want to stay.
Yeah, paras, they're angels. They really are saints and angels. Amazing work that they do. I think, you know, through the superintendent, specifically pay, make the job more attractive in that you could create a pathway to becoming a credentialed teacher, make that more attractive. Whether that's through human resources, the central office. I haven't been exposed to this side of the table enough yet, but that would be a priority. Also, you'll help the faculty. If we could, if you get the faculty to create a more harmonious learning environment, I think you'll find the need for paras may subside. Also, I think although they serve an incredibly important job, they also need, we need to attract quality. You know, we need to attract quality folks. And it's totally within our reach.
So I agree with my colleague sitting next to me that paras are angels. I could use a few at the college at the time, at this time, to help with some of my students. But so I sort of serve as a para to some degree, as well as the teacher and the tutor. I know that, I'm not sure, I guess I could have checked on this, but is there funding for paras? Is there funding for para training? I don't know if that is true. But I know that the Community College, we started and I was involved with the math curriculum for having para professional training, so get them ready to take their test. And we didn't have anybody take it for about three semesters. So I don't know what happened there. It was costly. I think it was $1,700 or something. But I don't know if some funding for that training might entice some, that might be putting some people off from maybe applying.
Definitely, the para shortage is clear that it's not just here in Middletown. One of the things I would look at is expanding the search, not only statewide, but perhaps out of state. Again, going back to the pay, I know they did have an increase, but I think that comes down to a lot. And if there's not the ability to be able to increase pay, maybe there's a job sharing or flex schedule. Having that flexibility perhaps may be an incentive as well as professional development. As to being underprepared, it's always hard coming into a new job. But it would be one of those things to look at a comprehensive training program and a mentorship for the first three to six months or even the first year, just to make sure everyone's on the right page and they feel confident in their abilities.
I'd echo all the creative ideas folks have mentioned, possibly reducing numbers, looking at stipends, recruiting from out of state. But really, I'd emphasize a lot on training and looking at creating high-quality para professional supports. When, I'll just share, back in May, my wife and I had the opportunity to participate at our children's field day. And we're outside, great time, everyone's having fun. And my wife and I, both social workers, both came up in child welfare, both highly experienced with foster children, children with IEPs, behavioral needs, things along those lines. We were quite surprised at the significant, some of the significant impairments some of the children were demonstrating, the needs that they required, and the running around that the paras were doing to try to accommodate those needs. Now granted, it's field day, so everyone's running around. It's a very exciting day. But they were hustling. And that can only be indicative of what it's like in the rest of the schools and throughout the system. So whatever we can do to support them and to bolster their training and their pay, whatever we need to do, we need to explore that quite thoroughly.
Our next question comes from the audience. Over the past few years, Middletown has lost many master teachers to early retirement and other districts. How do you feel the board can attract and retain qualified teachers, especially those of color? And we're starting with Liz.
I think that, you know, when you're talking about shortage areas of math and science, you really, the most important thing is to retain the teachers that we have already. Because attracting, there's a big difference between, you know, losing teachers that we've had and, you know, and good teachers that we've had, and trying to attract from shortage areas. As far as retention goes, I think that they need to have, the teachers need to have much, much more input into what the curriculum is, what they're teaching, you know, what are some of the issues you're dealing with during the day? And how can we change those things that need to change?
So with the loss of teachers, obviously, it's an issue on a couple different levels. I mean, kind of echo the previous, we need to empower the teachers to, to get, ask for more funding if needed, to ask for a change in curriculum if needed, to not be afraid of maybe some retaliation. I do think with administration, that may be an issue. It's possible. I don't, I don't know. What we can do is, I know we do a climate survey at the end of each year. And I think we need to hone that in to get those questions, get them down, really get their thoughts on how we can improve them. Because we value the teachers and that's the most important thing, to show the teachers that they are valued.
I'm writing a novel here, sorry. Attracting and retaining teachers, I'm sorry. I've noticed this mass exodus over the last school year, incredible amount. And inquiring with the, to the superintendent, asking, you know, "Why? Why is this happening?" I asked about exit interviews. If you have a company, your people are leaving, that's a great opportunity to find out why. They have nothing to lose. They're moving on. I really don't think that they were being conducive thoroughly enough. Now that has changed. That has changed. There's so much there. The statistical review of why teachers are leaving and credentialed, non-credentialed, that's been stiffened up. I've been watching the BOE meetings and that's improving. We're getting some good data now. Our coaching staff, if you've noticed, we all resigned last year in January. Josh Rozek, the head coach, I really wish I could finish this. I'll save it for my last minute. Thanks.
Oh, boy. So as far as retaining master teachers, I think what's really important, that there needs to always be an open line of communication. I think that, you know, when you're not heard, if they're not being heard, it can become very frustrating, no matter how loud they're getting. Obviously, if we could make Middletown Public Schools the best place to work, we would not have an issue with teachers wanting to leave. We would be having teachers, we'd have a line out the door of teachers wanting to come here. So that needs to be our focus, as well as, as far as recruiting new teachers. Again, if we can just make Middletown the place to be, then I don't think there's going to be a problem with that.
So attracting and retaining teachers is definitely a key. One of the indicators I was looking at is we have at least 40-plus percentage of students who are people of color, but yet 88% of your faculty are white. We need to spend more time, more energy, looking for and having faculty and staff that are reflective of your student populations in order for them to feel seen, to be heard, and to know that there are people who understand their backgrounds. Another thing obviously is looking at their pay, professional development, career track, seeing that, seeing if the teachers are satisfied in their current environment and making a concerted effort to validate their concerns and to hear what they're saying.
I think that I don't have any one solution for how we address the issue of retaining teachers. What I will say is that whether you're looking at curriculum, whether you're looking at, you know, trying to find them, what you're looking at retention, looking at the atmosphere of the work environment that you have, a lot of that rests on the leadership and the management of your administration. When I've spoken with parents over the summer, when I've talked with teachers over the summer, the resounding response has been that the lack of, the lack of support from central office and administration for us, for teachers, being on the front line, is just not there. We don't trust them. We don't feel confident that they're going to have our back when push comes to shove. And I think we need to change that. And if we need to look at changes at that level, I think that's, that's an appropriate thing to do. In terms of looking, trying to figure out how we're going to attract teachers of color, I would actually look at a lot of our local, state, and even national organizations, professional organizations to help us recruit, put out, you know, to express interest and try to recruit good and qualified candidates.
Yeah, it's really important that, you know, our teaching staff looks like our student body. That's true at every layer of society. It's really important that that's the case. When we look at, you know, what is causing teachers to leave, we need to look at the systemic problems that exist. You know, one of my, one of my kids is at Lawrence. There's 17 kids in each class. I hear about classes at Farm Hill that have 25 kids in each class. It's a big difference. So do we need to take a look at some systemic solutions to make the experience for teachers across our district better? Do we need to look at redistricting so that we have more equal class sizes across our district? We have eight elementary schools. It doesn't stay constant for years and years and years. It may be time to revisit some of that. And that's probably what causes a lot of desire to leave. Because if you're stuck in a situation where you're having 25 kids in a class every year, year after year, and it never changes, yeah, you're leaving at the first opportunity. And we can't pay enough to overcome that. So we need to look at systemic changes.
So this will be our final question before closing statements. What grade would you give our schools and why? Adam, you could start us off.
I don't like going first. Okay. Let's call it an emerging C. I think it has a lot of promise. I love the CNC program. I love the VoAAG. I love the aviation program. I'm sure you do too. We have a lot to offer. But I think at the base, where we We have a lot to offer, but I think at the base, where we need to improve the math and reading. I think with the illustrated math, I think that has some promise, I think that's going to keep helping. So I definitely want the emerging.
I think we tend to focus, excuse me, on the high school and the middle school. For each of them, right now, I would have to agree, C+, high C, and moving up, especially this year. Elementary, impressive, doing a super job. I think there's, that faculty, you're very familiar with this, that transition in growth in their brain and their emotional capacity and the ability to communicate undergoes incredible changes during that middle school period. And then as they enter high school, if it hasn't been worked on for the previous three years, you're going to have quite a battle. So I have to give the high school and the middle school a C. I'd give the elementary schools a B+ to A-. That's it.
Right, having just had two granddaughters go through Farm Hill School, love Farm Hill School, I give them an A. I'd say that I have to agree with my colleague here about Beaman, the middle school ages I've taught, I taught middle school for eleven years, I know how informative those years are. I think it's so important that we have policies and procedures set in place, you know, for these kids in this age group that will set them up for success when they go on to the next level of high school. They need to be given the tools, you know, solid math, English, reading, writing, yeah, so that they can be successful. As far as the high school goes, I'm sort of, I'm a little tainted, I think, with it, because I am the math sports specialist on campus, and I work with a lot of students that are not quite ready for college-level work, and I have a number, quite a number, that are coming from the Middletown High School. So I'd like to see that change.
So for elementary schools, each of the elementary schools, there's so many differences between them, but I think overall, it's a solid, like Dean had said, solid B+, A-. I think they're doing a fantastic job. I think once we hit middle school and high school, the overall grade kind of goes down. I think there could be more interventions in preparing students for high school, and then preparing students for either trades, college, or the workforce in order to succeed. But I think around the high school and middle school, I would probably say around a C+.
I would say for the elementary schools, I agree somewhere in the B+ A- range, sounds about right. And then as we move on through the middle and high schools, we're down in the C range. We face a number of challenges, whether you're looking at test scores, whether you're looking at behavioral incidents, whether you're looking at teacher support and burnout, all of these things start to become more and more pressing as you look through the middle and high schools, and they need to be addressed. And at this point, I just don't feel that they are being sufficiently addressed and supported.
One of the issues is, yeah, we can try to give the elementary schools some sort of blanket grade to go over all of it, but that's one of the, that's one of the issues in our district, I just talked about it, you know, class sizes at one versus the other. And it's one of the ways that we need to address equity in our district, is to make sure that all of our elementary schools are giving every kid the best foundation possible. The, you know, at the middle school and high school level, I mean, we've talked about COVID a little bit, you know, that there's, there's just lagging effects of that. And we're starting to come out of that now and seeing what the opportunities are. We need to do an analysis. If I have to give it a grade, it's, okay, sure, C+, increasing, great. But we also need to have some creativity in the room and look at what districts that are similar to ours. I'm a data person, I like to look at data. We need to look at districts that are similar to ours, that look like ours, ones where they are performing better than us. And I'm not just talking about using standardized test scores, I'm also talking about other ways of measuring, but we need to be creative about this. Thank you.
I agree that our elementary schools are performing better, and they're probably, you know, in the B range, B-plus range, overall. But again, you know, you have to look at each individual elementary, it's kind of hard to group them all together. As far as the middle school and the high school, I'm going to have to go with Adam's comment of emerging C. I think that we have some wonderful, wonderful programs, we have some great advanced placement classes, we had the aerospace program, we have the, you know, the nutrition program, agricultural sciences, so we have some really great pockets. But where I'm going to the emerging C is that we need to prepare our kids for the real world once they get out of high school. And I don't care whether it's a college, it's a two-year college, an internship, students need to know that, you know, if you don't like what your boss said, you can't just tell them off. You can't come in late three days out of five days a week. So, you know, not only academic, but we need those behavior skills.
That leaves us with concluding statements, I'm going to throw it to you, Dean.
I'm going to wrap it up in basically readdressing our situation with enough teachers of color. Myself, I'm trying to get as close to this problem, I'm seeking it out, I'm joining the anti-racism task force, my application is currently under review. On our, again, I keep hearkening back to this football program, but please understand, football was a byproduct, and is really a distraction, to get the kids out there and involved. The character building program, the academic tracking, which we implemented, created these synergies that we actually went undefeated for the first time in thirty years. Our grade point average, our goal was eighty-five percent, which we exceeded. It took two years to get there, two years to get there. But this is a model that can also be worked in with students in general pop. Any sport, any student, any faculty, it all works. And so, look at the, we all resigned a year ago, well, a year ago December. Josh Rozek, Coach Josh Rozek sought out and found the current staff that you now see. All of them were in this program.
Okay, I'd also like to address the possibility of hiring people of color, so that they represent more of our student body, so our students can relate more. The problem is, I know I've been on several hiring committees at the college, they're just not applying, and I think the biggest issue is they're not getting education degrees, or they're not going into the fields like math and sciences. So I think it needs to start in our schools here, to get all our students excited about learning and pursuing more academics. But I will finish here anyways. So I'd like to use my position on the Board of Education to help expand access to student supports, to foster stronger relationship between our schools and the family and the community they serve, as well as provide fiscal responsibility and transparency that the taxpayers of the community deserve. Lastly, I'd like to say that I love this community. I spent my early and late teen years here, met my husband here, forty-one years, by the way, we raised our children here, and now, as I'm reaching retirement age, I couldn't imagine living anywhere else. So I hope to use my gifts and talents on the Middletown Board of Education. Thank you so much.
Thank you all for spending the evening with us. I know, I'm sure this has, you know, been enlightening, and I hope we were able to answer the questions that you had. I had spent years working in insurance and risk management, and then publishing, and then finally I landed where my passion is, which is working for not-for-profits. I've spent a great deal of time working at IRS in New Haven, as well as Connecticut Students for a Dream, which is supporting and advocating for undocumented students. So I have a great affinity for those most vulnerable in our schools and in our population. I am thrilled to be here tonight, and I really believe that our students and all, our students are our children, and they deserve the best possible education, the best possible resources, and the best possible tools to succeed in their futures, outside of Middletown or outside of Connecticut.
Well, first and foremost, I want to thank the Teachers' Union and the National Honor Society for hosting tonight's event, we really appreciate this. And I also want to thank all the other candidates up here for being here and hearing our ideas and the concerns that were shared. If I'm elected, I pledge to make myself available to anyone with a concern, an idea, or any other thought related to our schools. Whether it's a student, whether it's a teacher, a para, a coach, anyone, I pledge to work collaboratively with my fellow board members here and with my entire community. Earlier tonight, some folks said that the board can't do this, or the board can't do that, in certain positions, and I disagree. Even if our positions and our thoughts on certain topics, whether it's state law, federal law, what have you, even if they come across as mostly symbolic, the board, we are leaders in this community, we are elected, we are the voice of the people, and where we stand on the positions are important. And I'm not going to be afraid to get out there, I'm not going to be afraid to stand on a position, and to be your voice for the Middletown Public Schools, your voice to the superintendent's office, and to advocate for the needs of everyone here. So I just want to thank you all for your time and enjoy the rest of your evening.
Thank you, thank you so much for putting this event on, thank you to my fellow candidates up here, this was really nice, it was really civil, this was great. So I have two kids in the system, and that's a huge motivating factor for me. But my wife says all the time, they're all our babies. We all have, we have a responsibility to take care of all of the kids in our community, that's why I'm doing this. And, you know, what Chris just said about, you know, he thinks that it's not necessarily that we can't do something, he's right. We, when we have people saying that their needs are not being met, we have a responsibility to meet those needs, regardless of what our position is on vouchers or charter schools or whatever. Our job on the Board of Education is to bolster our public schools and make sure they are the best choice for as many kids as possible in our community. That's our job, thank you.
I'd like to thank National Honor Society and the Federation for having us tonight. And if reelected, I will continue to be that voice. Those of you that have watched me at board meetings know that I'm not afraid to say what I need to say, and I will continue that. The one thing that I would like is, I would like more input from the parents and the teachers to tell me, you know, what do you need, what do I need to work on? Because sometimes, because I've been in education for thirty-five years, you know, I forget that, you know, I don't know everything. So I would really like that voice, and to hear, you know, from all of you, that's very important to me.
Thank you again to the Teacher Union and the National Honor Society, and thank you to the other candidates. I enjoyed hearing a lot of these great ideas, and I think we can collaborate on. Unfortunately, all of us can't make it, but hopefully we can definitely collaborate on some of these issues. I hope this is beneficial forum for everyone trying to figure out what direction they'd like the public schools to be in. I thought about getting this out, because it's a little harsh, but, you know, let's go with it. Do you support limiting your own access to Middletown schools or increasing it? Do you support out-of-control spending that doesn't yield effective results? We do spend a lot of money per kid in this district. Do you support more pointed spending that will focus on student achievement or non-administerative bloat? If you support an education system that you as a parent, and I as a parent, can work with that is responsive to your family's need as a primary educator, then I ask for your vote, along with the other Republican candidates. Thank you.
Before we depart, one final thank you to everyone at MFT, AFT Connecticut, NHS, our student volunteers, and I do want to give a huge round of applause to our student moderators, they did an awesome job. And our timekeeper, yes. A huge thank you to our audience that's online, and honestly, I may not be able to face you guys, because it's been helpful for my social anxiety, but it is not easy to be part of a community, and I'm so proud to be part of this community with you. Thank you so much for coming out, thank you to the candidates, have a lovely evening.
Sisters, brothers, and our Middletown Federation of Teachers, please come forward, for those of you who were part of organizing this event for a group photo. And then I want to ask the students in the Honor Society to come forward as well, the volunteers who were working the questions, come on up. We're taking the cards up so that the voices of the audience could be heard, come join us.